All right. Bojor Parish meeting for tonight will get underway. We're going to begin with announcements by Coach Downing. Then we'll have the prayer. We've got a special guest tonight singing the National Anthem. And then we'll have Mr. Faulk saying the pledge with you, Coach.
Thank you, President Bachhaus. We have several prayer requests. Maintenance employee Jeff Leachman, a longtime employee of Bojor Parish Schools, passed away on October 23rd after a short battle with cancer. So please keep his family and friends in your prayers. Our own Betty McCauley, Director of Student Services, is currently in the hospital having some tests run, as well as Board Member Robert Bertrand, who's also in the hospital. So please keep these people in your prayers and their families, and as always, unspoken requests.
Thank you. Ms. Darby?
Please, down your head. Father God, this is a day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We ask that you will bless those names that were called, Father God, those that are here, still with us, and those that are gone on. We ask that you will touch the hearts and encourage those that are weak and that are discouraged right now, Father God, and those that are in the hospital. We ask that you will bless the caretakers, bless their hand, help them to give the patient all the love and care that they need at this moment. And Father God, we ask that you will bless the students in this parish, watch over them, give them a mind to do what, to obey the teachers. And Father God, bless the teachers to be patient and to learn to listen and to give the directions that is needed for each individual child. Father God, we pray and ask that you bless each and everyone here, their homes, and whatever their needs may be, we ask that you will touch them and meet their needs as well. We thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your grace and mercy. In your name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Downey? We're going to have Ms. Downey sing the National Anthem first. There she is, young Horton High School student. How are you?
I am well. How are you?
Good, good, good.
Saw me go any time?
Whenever you're ready. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, say, can you see? Early light, what so proudly we... Twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, or the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and look at red light that once burst into... was still there. Oh, say, does that star... ...way? Or the light...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, that was beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to go to item 1.04 for approval of amendments for regular session of board for October 19th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Darby and Ms. Brotherton, please vote. Item 1.05, approval of the agenda for the regular session of the board for November 2nd, 2023. Do we have Ms. Smith, motion?
Second.
By Mr. Bullard, please vote. Motion passes. Item 2.01, recognition of newly appointed administrator presented by Mitch Downey, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Bachhaus. It's distinct pleasure tonight to recognize a young man that is a newly appointed administrator. 2005 graduate of Benton High School, attended college at Northwestern University, BIPCE LSU S, undergraduate degree at Louisiana Tech, master's degree at Louisiana College, and U+30 at ULM, started his career in Bojor Parish as a paraprofessional in 2009, then transitioned to special education teacher at Plantation Park from 2015 to 2023. He was also a player on a team that I coached. He has a brother that played. He's also, his brother's also an employee of ours. His father is a longtime and valued employee of the Bojor Parish School Board. Mr. Shandrick Tasby, the new Assistant Principal at Elm Grove Elementary.
Thank you to the board, Superintendent Downey, Superintendent Waylon, Roland. Thank you to my family for coming out tonight to support me because they've always been the biggest supporters, and here they are tonight. Thank you to my PPE family for the support. Thank you to Ms. Kim Meter for taking a chance and hiring me as her assistant. It's been a fun three weeks with her. She's teaching me a lot, and I'm enjoying every minute of it. She tells me every single day, it's just the tip of the iceberg, it's just the tip of the iceberg. And today I was like, oh, this iceberg must be huge, because there was something from the beginning of the day until the end. But like I said, I'm enjoying every single minute of it. There have been so many people that have encouraged me on this journey that are here tonight, Ms. Lillian Holly, my former principal, Ms. Tanya Hilburn, who whooped my butt every single day, but I'm here today, so I guess it was all worth it in the end. Ms. Kim Hawkins was Assistant Principal at Plantation Park, and she had something for me every single day. Mr. O., he was my fellow teacher when I arrived at Plantation Park, and then he came back as Assistant Principal. And it was good to have another guy to talk to, because some days the ladies were rough. So I appreciate Mr. O. And again, I hope I can do a fantastic job with the new students I've been charged to serve, and I'm sure it's going to be a great journey. Thank y'all.
That's great. Item 2.02, recognition of Bojor Parish Schools' good news presented by Ms. Sonia Bells, our public relations liaison.
Good evening, President Bachhaus, Superintendent Downey, to all of our school board members and everyone here this evening. We do have good news to tell you about this evening that is music to our ears. In fact, you already got a preview. I would like to ask that Amelia Downey come back to the podium. It is no surprise, after hearing her beautiful rendition of "The Star-Spangled Banner," that Amelia is soon going to be gracing the stage at Carnegie Hall in New York City. She is a junior at Horton High School, the alma... ...was. She's a junior at Horton High School, and she has been chosen to sing with the Honors Choir where he is part of the Honors Performance Series there at Carnegie. And it comes, also is no supr... She has been in Bojor Schools' Talented Music Program from the time that she was in third grade, and then also the Talented Theater Program from the time that she was in sixth grade. And not only does she excel vocally, but also musically, because she is a member of the Big Red Hot Tin Air Band, Big Buck and... She plays synthesizer keyboard in the marching band, and then during concert season, she is a mallet player. So she is musically inclined all the way around. And we are so excited to be able to say that she is one of those who gets the rare chance to be able to sing on one of the world's most renowned stages when it comes to music. So we have a special presentation for her this evening on behalf of Bojor Federal Credit Union and Bojor Schools. This is a medallion that we don't give that many of, but it is an award of excellence when every day, every student, every way. And we are so proud that we can say that we knew you when, and that you are a product of Bojor Schools. So you go, Sean. Congratulations. Bojor proud about adding two more schools to the list of campuses with the Purple Star School Distinction. You know, Bojor Schools is home to more than 2,700 military-connected students. So being distinguished as a district with the most Purples in the state of Louisiana is especially gratifying. And here I recognize our two latest Purple Star Schools is our Military Services Liaison, Holly George, and I'd like to invite her to the podium.
Good evening, President Bachhaus, Superintendent Downey.
Ms. George.
School board member, Ms. Poole. It's the first time I've been able to say that. I'm excited to be back, and I'm excited to be here tonight. Less than a month ago, Mr. Roland and Ms. Bells accompanied me to the changing of command on the base, Barksdale Air Force Base. And it is a moving ceremony. It's a historical ceremony. I knew Mr. Roland was a history buff, so he enjoyed every word of it. But it really was nice to hear again the history of Barksdale, the history of B-52s. We were able to tour a B-52 this spring, several of us in the room. And I'm always reminded when I'm out there, you know, they always say the B-52 is the workhorse of our military family, and it's called on first, whether it's nationally or internationally. And we know it's being called on a lot right now. So when you look at it in that perspective and you look at the history, it is an honor for Bojor Schools to be able to service these military families. And I also have to add, it's not just our Air Force, even though that's why I'm here, because I was a military Air Force brat, but it's all forces. And it was neat to tour a B-52 that possibly my father had flown in, because, you know, they've been here since the 60s, and they'll continue to be here for a long time, as we were told. So with that in mind, when we look at our Purple Star Schools, I met with the 17 that we already had at the beginning of the school year to ensure that everything was in place for our military families, to ensure that their distinction can continue. Then also, you know, next week, I'll be going to several of the schools for the veterans' assemblies and events that will be within all of our schools next week. And it's just been a great start of the year for our military families. So tonight is one of my favorite activities. We have two more schools that we get to, say, have the distinction from the state of Louisiana. And both schools started this process last year. And one of them, they had to kind of put it on hold just for a little bit because their sponsor is in the reserves and was called up. So once he came back, he got back to work and made it happen. So I'm very proud of these two schools. We have six more schools that are in the wings, by the way, that will continue to meet this distinction. But the two tonight, the first one is near and dear to me. They are a feeder school for Barksdale, and they've worked very hard. And they have paired their military club, whatever, with their school, with the Leader in Me program. So they've paired it, and it's been really neat for them this year. And that is an elementary school, and that is Kerr Elementary. And Ms. Abney is here to accept this call. Do you want to say anything?
Yes, no? This is an honor. You know, we love being by Barksdale. We love, my goal is to have all the military students want to come to my school now. And so, because, you know, we're right there. We're right there at the gates, and we are the best elementary school right now in Bojor Parish, just so y'all know. But this is a true honor, so thank you.
There's another middle school. We're only one shy of having every middle school labeled a Purple Star School. And this is from our large military community, from our Horton community. We have a large number of military families out there. I get calls daily from families who are moving out to Horton, military families. And this one is Horton Middle School, and Mr. Warren is here to accept this certificate. If you hadn't figured it out, he's the one that had the teacher that is in the reserves.
It's awesome to get to serve the people that serve our country. We love that we have a huge population of military students at Horton, not just from Barksdale, but different reserve units in the area. And it's just a privilege to be able to be recognized here tonight, so thank y'all.
In addition to earning the Purple Star School Distinction, Kerr and Horton Middle School also received the Bojor Chamber of Commerce Military Community Champion designation. So we just want to, again, congratulate these two schools and thank them for supporting and loving on our military-connected students and their families. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bells. Congratulations to those schools. Mr. Tasby? We got one other thing we need to do. We try to help our new teachers and principals out, so we're going to keep him out of the... Doghouse. Doghouse. This is where you come back up and introduce your wife so you don't have to sleep in the garage.
That's right. I appreciate it.
I've been there. You don't want to go. Too cold to be in the doghouse. All right, Coach, thank you. 3.01, request approval of school calendar for 2024 and '25, '25 and '26, presented by Jason Roland, Assistant Superintendent of Administration.
Thank you.
Coach?
Thank you, President Bachhaus, Superintendent Downey, board members. Just want to come back to you with the staff vote of the calendars that we provided for you last week. And we had 1,944 employees vote. Option A received 91% of the vote, and Option B received 9%. So we submit that to the board tonight for your approval.
If that we accept, calendar...
A had 91%.
Calendar A for approval for the '24, '25, '25, '26 year.
Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Brotherton. Please vote, board. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 3.02, request approval of resolutions recommending termination of ITEP contract for A.W. Chesterton, back to the inception of the contract, presented by Ms. Banberg, Chief Financial Officer. Ms. Banberg?
Good evening, President Bachhaus, Superintendent Downey, and board. So this one's a little bit unusual, so I wanted to take a minute to go over what we're looking at here. This is actually the second year that we have received a noncompliant letter on A.W... I'm so sorry, A.W. Chesterton and J.R. Juno. And so what that is, is, you know, when we approve the ITEP contract, they make a commitment for a certain number of jobs and a certain payroll and things like that. And so in both of those years, they've had trouble meeting that amount that they have put in their application. And so when that happens, we receive a notification from the state, and the ITEP committee meets and brings a recommendation to the board. And so the ITEP committee met on October 24th, which includes a representative from each of the local governments within the parish. And my understanding from the ITEP committee meeting is that the consultant for this ITEP has been requesting, has been contacting the state board to request a termination of the ITEP contract and of the waiver. And so that was brought to our attention as well. And so it was actually the recommendation of the ITEP committee to go ahead and recommend to the state board to terminate both ITEPs, back to the inception of the agreement. Now, that was a unanimous vote of the ITEP committee, and so that would be this current item and the next item on the agenda. We are asking for y'all's approval of the resolution, so that we will send that resolution to the state, and ultimately, the state would have to make the determination if they're going to terminate that or not.
All right, very good.
I know that was a lot of explanation. I'm sorry.
No, that's very good. I understand it. Mr. Self, we vote on individually or together, since she presented and mentioned item 3.03?
Because it's two items on the board, I would vote them both individually.
Individually? Okay. Do we have a motion for item 3.02? Motion by Ms.?
Question.
One quick question. Ms. Banberg, are we the lead entity on this revocation, or have the other...
Please, jury. I'm sorry.
The others have...
They voted it last night, or yesterday.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. No more questions?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bullard, seconded by Ms. Darby. Motion passes. Do you have anything to present on 3.03, or you included it?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to read it to put it in the record. Item 3.03, approval of resolution recommending termination of the ITEP contract for J.R. Juno, back to the inception of the contract, presented by Ms. Banberg, Chief Financial Officer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bullard, second. Ms. Brotherton, please vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Banberg. We'll move to item 3.04, request permission to issue solicitations for food and related supplies for school year 2024 and 2025, presented by Ms. Carrie Douglas.
Good evening, President Bachhaus, Superintendent Downey, members of the board. Tonight, I come to you requesting permission to issue a solicitation for the food and related cafeteria supplies for the 2023, 20... I'm sorry, the '24, '25 fiscal year. All responses will be brought back for the board to review and award at a later date.
Yolanda Jefferson.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Darby. Motion passes. Item 3.05, request permission to issue solicitation, child nutrition commodities for school year 2024 and 2025, presented again by Ms. Carrie Douglas.
This is another request to issue a solicitation for USDA commodities for our child nutrition program. for our child nutrition program. Again, all responses received will be brought before the Board for award at a later date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Ms. Darby, seconded.
Second.
Mr. Faulting, please vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Douglas.
I have one more for you.
One more? All right. Item 3.06, Request Permission to Order Three 77 Passenger Buses, One Special Education Bus, and Three Multifunctional Buses to Be Paid For Out of the 2024, '25 Fiscal Year General Fund, Presented by Ms. Carrie Douglas.
Yes, this—I'm just asking for permission to obligate $1,670,000 out of next year's budget for the purchase of these seven buses. All of these buses will be received after July 7—after July 1st of 2024 and paid after July 1st of 2024.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a second for that motion?
Some move, you have—you have a second.
All right, we have a second, but before we vote, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to our Transportation Committee. I feel like it's a lot of money, and we've—we've really worked hard to try to get all of our buses in line for air conditioning and other items. And I—although I'm not against this, I—I feel like we should give our Transportation Committee an opportunity to review it and bring it back to us at the next meeting if that doesn't create any major problems. So that is my motion. If I have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Faulting.
You already had a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor.
Right, but we can—we can make this motion on top of that one. Make it. We need to vote on the first one first.
We need to vote on the first, or if that member desires, they can amend that motion. But motion on the floor would be the—
Run that by me again. Run that by me again.
Yes, sir. So the—the first motion was made, so that member can either amend their motion and—to what you like, if that's their desire. But if not, then we would need to vote on the first motion. And then, if that doesn't carry, we can make the alternative motion.
Mr. Self, can we just ask to table? And—and that would then take care of everything?
That's also an option, yes.
Mr. President, I'd move that we just table further action on this.
Is this—is that going to delay the date?
What's our time frame on ordering for—for prices?
Well, Ms—Ms. Smith, the buses that we ordered last October, of the seven that we've ordered, we've got six in so far. Two of them are on the road, the four others just got here. The seventh bus hasn't hit the assembly line yet. So I—to answer your question, I can't speak for next year.
We have a motion to table this item, seconded by Mr. Faulting. Any questions for the Board? Please vote.
I think you have to have a motion.
You don't have to—
You don't have to have a motion to table.
You don't—you don't have to vote on the table.
You don't—you don't vote on the table.
You don't have a table? All right, education night. Education night, thank you. I'm gonna—I'm gonna trade my book in. My book got me all backwards. All right, so it's been tabled until it goes before the—we'll have to come up next meeting.
Can I—can—I have a question?
Yes, you may.
Go ahead. I've read what you sent out and all.
Yes, ma'am.
And—and I—I've talked to other members, and there are some concerns from members concerning the air-conditioned buses that we have and don't have. It was my understanding, when I read what you sent out, that we only have a few buses left that are not air-conditioned, that are—they're shorter routes, like 15, 20-minute route buses.
Yes, sir. So those—no, you are correct. Those are route buses.
Right.
So those that are en route. So we still have 25 that are not.
Okay.
But they are very, very, very short routes. And we—we were commended by Lean Frog for being able to get our routes so short.
Okay.
But, you know, when we can get—pop down to an apartment complex and pick up 60 kids real quick and get them back, those are the types of things that we've done. And—and then, I also mentioned to you in what I sent to you, we went from 238 to 208 routes. So we've reduced 30 routes in the past six years. I tell you that because that's going to help us get to getting the buses air-conditioned more quickly than what we had thought six years ago.
Okay, another question. Right now, when we need to use buses to go to extracurricular activities, whether it be the band or choir, whatever, we are having to use route buses?
We are, so let's go—because it's not really—air conditioning's not necessarily a player today, but let's go to August or September. If someone needs a bus for Friday, I'm taking a route bus off the route midday Thursday. So the kids that are on that route are riding a un-air-conditioned spare bus Thursday afternoon, all day Friday, and depending upon when that bus gets back, they may be riding a un-air-conditioned bus Monday morning as well. So when you run 470 out-of-town trips a year, we're—we're taking a lot of route buses and putting them out. And then if it's a 77-passenger bus that we're putting—I don't have a spare 77 to put in its place, so I'm putting a 66. Therefore, I'm causing some overcrowded conditions. This is what I typically get. If it's at a high school on a Friday afternoon, and a—and a 77 normally goes, but now I'm sending a 66, the high school kid shows up to the bus and looks on and says, "It's too full, I'm not riding." Monday morning, I get a call from the parent, "Why did you kick my kid off the bus?" And that's not happening. So that's kind of the situation we're—we're in. Multifunctional school buses have not been legal in Louisiana due to the law. They are in almost all other states, but now, one of the legislators passed a law that will allow us—to use those buses.
Okay, let me—let me ask you this. So we're—you're proposing that we order three buses for this?
For this year, yes.
My question, I guess, when I read it was, is that going to be enough?
No, ma'am. No.
Because three buses—
It's not gonna solve our problem.
Because they're gonna hold less students or less kids, correct?
Well, they—they could. If you—if you have two high schoolers per seat, it's gonna be one row—if you—basically, if you take a row of seats out and give a little bit more space, so you're gonna lose six seats, but it will give a little bit more legroom. And I don't know if you saw those pictures that I—I sent.
I did. And these buses would be used for longer trips, correct?
They—they would.
So the kids would be more comfortable on these buses?
But they would be used for Natchitoches, Ruston. But if you—if you see the—the trips that we have already approved, to Mandeville, to Baton Rouge, to Lafayette, I think we approved one to Tennessee, to Dallas, and so—I'm not exactly saying I'd like to use these buses going to Tennessee.
Right.
But I would like for the others. And—and—and I would again tell you that those charters, if you look at the last trip request that you guys approved, one of those buses overnight for Parkway was $12,000.
I know, it's—it's a lot of money.
I—I think Houghton's is near $8,000, another one is $38,000. We're spending a lot of money. And small organizations, you know, I think some girls—the girls wrestling team this week had to travel someplace. They're not gonna be able to raise enough money to go charter. Some schools, unfortunately, their kids are just not gonna be able to get a charter. This is gonna help kids to be able to ride in comfort and kind of put all the kids on the same plane.
And I don't know if people realize it, but the charter buses are leased out, but they have to pay for it.
They do.
We're not paying for it.
No.
So you take—a lot of them can't afford, and they're going up in prices. That's why I asked if three buses would be enough. I realize three buses would never be enough for, say, a football team, or they would be for a basketball team, but I just know that—that the charter buses are so outrageous now to try to rent those, and they're having to come up with the money.
Well, one of the things that I did is I went back through several months of trip requests. And if you're seeing a lot of groups that are 16, 20, 24, again, those groups are not gonna be able to raise a lot of money. It's different if you're the football team or the band. But unfortunately, there's a lot of organizations at schools, and—
They can.
And they just can't afford it.
Some schools can't, so—but I guess what—I just wanted some clarity to—to understand. So what you're saying, if we were to order these three buses, how would we determine who got to use them? Is it first come, first served? How would we do—
I kind of put that in there much, and I probably sent you too much, but one of the things that Coach Rowland gives is people asking them at the last minute.
Yeah.
If you're gonna get your request in early, that should be one of the factors. But we got a playoff game next week. We don't have any idea where our teams are gonna go. That needs to be taken into consideration, too.
So would we buy more of these buses later? I mean, like, next year, we would try to add to—
We—we—we might come back to you next year, yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to clear up some things.
Hold on. Coach Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon, or Colonel Haddon, counting, including the six buses that we got this year, what percentage of our buses are now air-conditioned on a daily basis?
Oh, we have—on the sped side, we have 36 air-conditioned buses with 35 en route. On the regular ed side, we have 25 of 173 not AC.
Okay, the last time I looked, I think it was 83%. Now, it's probably 86, 87.
Yes, sir.
And the other comment I would make, if you make the playoffs and you play a couple rounds away, you lose money. You lose money for your program. You—you might play three rounds in the playoffs, which ought to be a windfall for your program, but when you get through paying for travel, charters, and meals, you lose money. And that's—that's difficult for people to deal with when that is supposed to be the goal.
I don't know if this would be Ms. Douglas or you, Colonel Haddon. How long will these prices—I'm sure this is a quote, right? How long are these good—prices good for?
Our international dealer has done well holding prices for us. So last year, we bought buses at cost-plus, and Bojor Parish paid what we came to the Board and asked. There was no plus. Now, there was an 11% price increase for most everybody else, but we didn't pay that. I will tell you this, buses five years ago, we paid $92,800 a bus. They are $130,000 today, and the sped bus is $150,000. So they are.
So how long will this—we—this—this quarter—
I'm confident they're gonna hold our prices.
Okay.
I really am. Mr. Bachhaus, I'm open up to any other questions if there are.
Any other questions? I'll make a comment. Everybody knows my thoughts about this, because I sent an email and copied all of them, including Mr. Downey. I don't know if I made it clear or not, but I have the absolute utmost confidence and respect for that man right there. He has put our transportation department on top. I cannot—I cannot imagine a more efficient, more well-run transportation department anywhere, not just in Louisiana, but anywhere. And when he makes a recommendation, it's—it's one of those—don't—don't cloud the issue with the details. If Dave Haddon said that's the way it needs to go, that's all I need to hear. In this particular instance, because of all of the criticisms and the controversies surrounding non-air-conditioned buses, and Lord knows, we've all heard them, every one of us, I just wanted to be sure there was sufficient justification. And everything you've said, Colonel Haddon, is spot-on. I wish we could say, "Hey, we'll—we'll buy 10 of these buses to ensure our children, our students, have good, comfortable travel accommodations, whether they're going across the river to a museum, or they're going to the other side of New Orleans in a playoff game." But those comforts are not the daily comforts that parents become concerned with. They want to know, you know, in—in late July, early August, and it's 102, 104, our phones start ringing if it's an on-air-conditioned bus. You have—you—you responded back to me, and everybody here saw that justification. And that—that was satisfactory for me.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard, and I have a terrific staff and great mechanics, so I'll pass that on to them, because they really deserve the comments that you passed on.
Well, they gotta have the—the right leader, and you're the right leader.
Since you do bring that up, if I could, just for one minute, we—when I sent you something about the federal motor carriers and the no idle policy—
Yes, sir.
What—what folks need to understand is when a bus leaves the airline compound and it goes to the ramp, it cannot turn the air conditioner on. And so that bus in August is hot. When that bus leaves the ramp and you turn the air conditioner on, and it rolls to Shed Road where a bus has three stops and it's back in 17 minutes, that bus is never gonna get cool. And you're gonna get those calls that it's hot and the air conditioner doesn't work. Trust me, the air conditioner does work, but buses are just not gonna cool like your car. There's 150 feet of hose, and when there's one little pinhole, trying to find a pinhole leak in 150 feet of hose underneath the bus is difficult to find. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other comments? Also, Colonel, the committee that you put together did a great job.
Well, I think we had a great representation from all over the parish and different organizations that could speak to their needs, so I appreciate that.
Well, we thank you very much for your—
All right. Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
I have a quick question. One question is, because that explanation is perfect, it makes—no, and I'm not saying I'm against it, because I'm not, I just want to be clear, parents aren't gonna listen to the reasoning like that.
No.
Perception, apparently, is everything, and the—the perception is going to be—
This is what I get all the time.
Right.
I'm not worried about other kids, I'm only worried about mine.
Right.
I hear it every day.
I just want to be—I want to be able to say, and I mentioned it earlier, when the summer comes around again and—and everything points that it's gonna be even hotter and we're gonna have the most situations, are you gonna be adequately prepared with these buses? Are there gonna be coolers on every bus? There needs to be—if there's portable fans that—I mean, we need to make sure—so when a parent, undoubtedly, a parent's gonna call and say, "Hey, at the end of the day, you approved half a million dollars for buses for a few kids to go on a few trips that's extracurricular, and there's still buses"—I mean, perception is everything. That's what they're gonna say, and it doesn't matter the explanation, even if it's justified, it doesn't matter. I want to be able to say, "Hey, Colonel Haddon has taken all the precautions. This year is gonna be different. This year, we're gonna be prepared. There's gonna be coolers on every bus, there's gonna be water on every bus, there's gonna be whatever. Are we gonna have—be able to make sure we can tell those people with confidence that those buses are gonna be okay for those kids?"
I can't exactly say that, because federal motor carriers is not gonna allow me to carry coolers on the bus. If it can't be placed safely underneath the seat, we can't do that. But what we do always do, and Sonia—Sonia does a great job of putting out about bring your water bottles, put your water bottles in the—the freezer the night before, so that—so that parents, you know, are prepared, you know, have their children prepared. We do, at the end of the day, ask especially our elementaries to make sure that the kids can go hydrate before they get on the bus. So Ms. Sonia does a terrific job of getting that out to the public.
And I got businesses to donate for the—a couple of south Bojor schools—
You did.
To donate a bunch of cases of water, get them while they're on the bus, so they still can carry water on the bus.
If they can carry a bottle of water on the bus, yes, sir.
And that's—you get what I'm saying, right? It's just the perception.
I got you.
You know, so.
Colonel.
Great report, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one thing? What? Go ahead, Coach.
So, I have two things I want to make sure everybody understands. So, 86% of our buses are air-conditioned. Depending on the length of the route, that air conditioner may be at full efficiency, or it may not have time to have an effect on the temperature. This past year was extreme, districts across the state, many of which we talk to on a daily basis, most of which, if there are 68 districts in the state, we have probably, we're in the top five or six in terms of percentage of air-conditioned buses.
Yes, sir.
Our air-conditioned buses are assigned to our longer routes. The most, the, the greatest length of a route for a non-air-conditioned bus is somewhere around.
You and I looked at that several weeks ago.
About 22 minutes.
Yeah, what, it was, for some reason or another, I think it was like 32 minutes.
Okay.
But it was, our average route is 37 minutes, and there, most of the routes that don't have air are against the ones that are very, very, very short routes.
So, we, not to understate the, the need and the urgency of providing air-conditioned buses, I think we do a good job as a parish, comparatively speaking, when compared to the other 68 in the state, and I understand that people don't care about the other 67 or 68.
They don't.
But, I mean, when, when you look at the overall comparison, your department's doing a great job trying to accommodate that, and I applaud you for that, and I think the way that you have staged the buses and assigned the buses, applied a lot of common sense to the length of the routes, trying to do everything we can do. Unfortunately, we can't decrease 107 down to 92. I mean, it is what it is, and it's difficult to deal with for everybody.
And, and Coach, sometimes it's, it's maintenance issues. Mr. Bullard may be, remember that our 2011s through 2016s were involved in, in some lawsuits that the company won all, and, and I got to be careful about where I put certain buses. I don't want to put certain buses way out on a long route when I know I'm trying to nurse it along, and I, I need to put it in town.
Yes, there were lawsuits, but Bossier was still taken care of.
We were the.
Thanks to your efforts.
We were the, we were the only school, we're the only school district in America where that company is refurbishing our engines at their cost. And they do that because our mechanics have developed procedures and preventive maintenance measures that the company's engineers take to make a better product. Yes, sir.
We're going to cut this again, real quick, I just, Colonel.
Yeah.
By no means is it anything about transportation. We're responsible for the finances, we're asking a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Out of the general fund. I would like for our Transportation Committee to take a look at what you've presented. Your committee is fantastic, but they're not necessarily concerned with a million dollars, they're concerned with availability.
Yeah.
That's it. We're going to delay it for one meeting, and we're going to make sure that we make the right decision, and that's all it is.
That's, that's fair to me. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. Item 3.07, request approval of trip.
These are in order.
All right.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Bullard.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Poole. Please vote. Item 4.01, announcements, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Bachhouse. I want to take this opportunity to thank all those that were involved yesterday in, in getting water to schools, and water trucks, Mayn and Stacy, and Mr. Rosey and his crew, along with Carla Horton, and, and Ms. Bales, and several others that worked with those schools that were affected by the water main break in Bossier City, and it's just a testament to their commitment, and the, the things that they do in order to make sure that our students can be safe at school with, with plenty of water to drink, and, and facilities to use. So, once again, thank you for the people that respond and go above and beyond, and we, time and time again, that's been the case, so thank you all for that. The next regular session of the board is November 16 at 6:00 p.m. here at the BIC. That concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Coach. Item 5.01, adjournment of the regular session of the board. Motion by Mr. Bullard. Seconded by Mr. Faulkton. Please vote. Did it go through? A Ms. Poole? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.